It's not going to be going on the fire hall and they're coming back, I want to say next month for the other group that couldn't make it that day. So, you know, it's it's cool for us to see other disciplines using that that training facility in a way, you know, we didn't, we didn't plan for, but we're certainly glad that it serves that role. It's also used by CAL FIRE from time to time for for engine company training quite a bit. Our other project is our River Valley Road project, our River Valley Station relocation. That has been an ongoing project that's still ongoing. I'm hopeful that we're going to get through the planning stage of that. I'm hopeful that we're going to get some, some dirt to move here shortly, and I'm hoping that it will be completed by late 2023. I'd probably be a little bit more bothered by the, how slow it's been if my engine that I purchased to go in that station, well, a different engine to go in that station, but that engine is also delayed like everything else in America. And so I was supposed to get it in 2022. Now they tell me it's going to be late 2023. They're building fire engines taller. They don't, they can't make them wider. So if they're going to make them bigger, they make them taller. And that's the problem with our current Camp tonight station is we can't fit the trucks that fit in our main station or Camp tonight station. So it's limits my ability to move apparatus around to stations where they can, can extend their longevity. So maybe it's a good thing. But hopefully by sometime September-ish, you're going to start seeing some dirt move over across from Palomino where our new station is going in. And that station is obviously replacing the Camp tonight station, but it's also probably going to play a bigger role in what happens in Hydesville as well. I struggle to get members in Hydesville. That's not a community where young people move to. It's not a community that has a, a large number to draw from. And so as those numbers dwindle, that station may have to actually pick up some of the load and the fact that it's a little bit closer to Hydesville is beneficial in a lot of ways for us. So that's, that's my report. You know, the fire department is 70 members strong. It's a great group of, of men and women. I couldn't be more proud to be their leader. And I certainly thank you guys for all the support that you give the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Any questions for Russ? Russ, do you mind?
I'd just comment. I was at Ace Lumber Yard the other day when the CHP were all
I'm sorry.
No, that was fine. I, I got a kick out of it, but it was funny. I look out, not a firefighter in sight, but there's CHP everywhere.
Yeah, it was, it was a colorful verbiage. I will, I will put it that way. You know, the first time it, it happened, it kind of startled us. We didn't realize what was going on. And after that, it just became, okay, that's what the sound's going to be. So that was our goal. I mean, I met with, with Sergeant Caddell and said, hey, what are your guys' ideas? What do you want to, is, is, if there's any way we can build that into it where other disciplines can use it, we want to do that. So it's, it's really cool for us to see other people that, that get to come down. And, and we like having CHP in our town. So
Awesome thing.
It's always a win-win.
It's literally countywide, I think.
It is, it is indeed.
Thank you.
Comment and a question.
Yep.
I was at the, well, several of us were at the badge painting ceremony when you introduced the citizens, not necessarily firefighters, but the volunteers that you're using. I was really impressed with the number of volunteers that you bring into the department to assist in various ways.
Yeah, I mean, on, on average, you know, we bring in about 10 to 12 folks a, a year, each year. So that usually means a certain number of folks are leaving us as well for various reasons. But at the same token, the, the community continues to provide us with, with new folks and, and with that comes that new challenge of getting them trained up and getting them ready to use. So, you know, we, we don't have the same problem in Fortuna and Camp tonight that we have in Hydesville. So, you know, it's, you know, I, I am, I am blessed that people continue to want to do this kind of volunteer work. This is, this is, this is not like your normal volunteer work. There's, there's a lot that goes into it. The time commitment is tremendous. And so every time we bring new folks in, I'm just amazed that there are people that continue to want to do this. And this community continues to produce them.
My question deals with budget. And I know your, your report didn't have anything to do with the budget and there might be some bones and drones here tonight. But out of the 2.7 odd million dollars that was distributed for measure, for Measure Z funds, not counting the training talent, how much of that Measure Z money did Fortuna Fire Department? If you know, if you know.
I, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I would say it's less than 20,000 this last year, probably less than 15,000 actually. You know, we have tried as the, as the largest volunteer department in the county, we have tried to not stick our hand out first. You know, there's a lot of departments that, that have to do bake sales to, to put a new tire on their engine. We don't have to do that. We're, we're, we're a little more comfortable than that. So we've tried to, to not dip our hand into that pot very much. But at the same token, it's time. So I think as we move forward, Mike, you're going to see that I'm going to request more of those funds for, you know, the, the, the problem that we run into is we put the only fire academy on in the county. Everybody sends their people. It used to just be the Uber Valley. Now, I mean, we get people from West Haven, Blue Lake. I got them from Willow Creek last year. And so, you know, my instructors that, that we put together are in typically less, are in worse gear than the students that, that come from a, a smaller department because those Measure Z funds bought all those smaller departments, all that gear. And so there, there needs to be a time where that evens out. And, and I think that's coming next year and what I, what I request. Because when, when you're the agency that is fronting the, the bulk of training for everybody else, but we get none of that funding to support that, there's no Measure Z goes to, to our training academy. None of that money goes towards the training camp. That's all donated. A lot of it by our local insurance companies. Bear River donated some last year. So it's time for Measure Z to step up and recognize what Fortuna Fire does for the community. Not necessarily for us, but it, it benefits us, but also for the, the greater good of the Uber Valley.
I agree. And congratulations on the training talent. I know that it'll be, it'll serve the community, all of Humboldt County.
It will, you know, and I, and if, if I'm giving credit to where it started from, that's a Frank Kaiser project, our former chief that, that had a desire to do that on his own and see if we could fund it. So it's kind of cool to see it actually get completed when he can still enjoy it. So.
Thank you, Russ. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know you're busy. All right. And our next presentation is by our police chief, Casey Day. It's not homework, is it?
Test at the end.
And the writing's awful little.
Yeah, that's currently one of the technical problems we're having. But that has generated right from our system. So once again, thank you, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. It's my pleasure to present the mid-year report. And so without delay, we are going to jump right into some statistical reporting data this evening from the first six quarters.
Pardon me, is your microphone on? Thank you.
Thank you. So as you know, the police department has recently made the full transition from UCR summary reporting to NIBRs, which it's the Group A and Group B National Incident-Based Reporting System. The handout that I just gave you basically shows current NIBRs tabulations today this year so that you can kind of start to really familiar, familiarize yourself and start to get used to seeing the increased reporting categories. As you can see where historically, we've really reported on eight of the main type one UCR categories. This is much more inclusive and sophisticated. And so, you know, one of my thought processes was, you know, I would wait till I had a full year of data to present it to the council. I think this works better for the first six months. And I think you'll start to kind of understand why as we go through this. So again, the categorical increases are significant and much more sophisticated than the historic UCR summary reporting methods. On the overhead slide, you will see something that looks a little more familiar. I, I think it's the UCR type one crimes, which, you know, we still track and they're still applicable, applicable, and they really cover, you know, those major crimes that we're used to seeing the statistical reporting on. So it's a comparison slide up there. If you look at the comparison between the same reporting period from last year, really the bottom line is that these type one crimes have primarily decreased in at least three of the eight categories. So far this year, general larceny is down by approximately 37%. Burglary is down by about 75%. And aggravated assault is down by about 68%. The other categories have stayed relatively consistent with mid-year totals Domestic violence-related calls for service are also down this year. Last year, the department identified 95 DV-related calls for service between January and June. This year, the department has only dealt with about 22 DV-related calls. These 22 calls have resulted in six felony investigations and 16 misdemeanors. Thirteen total arrests have been made thus far that are DV-related, specific to domestic violence. And nine of those cases were independently submitted to the district attorney's office for review and arrest warrant issuance. So just to add some clarification, our policy and our methodologies within the department are try, are to try and identify those primary aggress, aggressors and make arrests when we can. There are some instances in past tense domestic violence where, you know, essentially there's a lack of evidence. We have a he said, she said, or he said, he said, she said, she said, where, you know, essentially what we have to do is, is weigh the credibility of the statements and let the district attorney make that, that ultimate decision on whether the charges will be filed. If they opt to file on the charges, generally an arrest warrant will be issued for the responsible. Keep in mind that we're still a few days shy of the end of the month, but enforcement statistics have also, are also coming in slightly lower in most categories compared to the first half of last year. On the screen, you can see that there's been a slight reduction in total calls for service from approximately 10,500 calls in 2021 to a little over 8,000 calls this year. Interestingly enough, though, when you start to dig into the stats, we found that we've experienced about a 15% rise in felony arrests. Now, most of you know I could go all night about statistics. I really get into that stuff, but I don't want to put everybody else to sleep. So we're going to segue into a quick Measure E update. As the chief in the department, you know, Measure E contributes so much to the department's ability to provide services. And Measure E funds a lot of our positions as well as equipment asks. You know, I won't go into all of those, but it does fund our detectives bureau, problem-oriented policing position, community surface officer, part-time code enforcement, and new this year, the full-time records clerk position. And back to the single problem-oriented policing position that's funded, the department put together and launched an actual problem-oriented policing team a few months ago in April. The team is comprised of a sergeant and 14 members who address quality of life issues, sex offender compliance, and probation parole compliance. The team also proactively addresses narcotic violations and other dangerous criminal activity that's occurring throughout the city. The department will be using AB 109 funds to cover some of the overtime costs associated with special enforcement operations. And the team members participate other than the one compensated position who is more of a full-time pop person. The other team members participate as part of their assigned collateral duties. These officers are dedicated to the community. It was brought to me about a year ago that, hey, you know, we really feel like as a department, we could make a bigger impact using a pop team. And so that's what we're doing. And I'm going to give you just a little bit of information on what's been accomplished in a short amount of time since April. So in the last two months, the pop team has made approximately 10 arrests for major narcotic violations. They've served multiple search warrants throughout not only the city of Fortuna, but anywhere investigator, investigations are able to establish a nexus. So what that may look like is if we have a resident or a business or a home in the city of Fortuna that is somehow connected to another person living in another jurisdiction, we're still writing search warrants and continuing that rollover investigation into those other areas. So as I said, we served multiple search warrants, assisted with illegal camping violations, addressed a host of other municipal code issues over the last couple of months, and have also worked collaboratively with the Riverwalk Foundation concerning cleanups and abatement issues. They have also been requested on a multitude of occasions to assist other allied agencies with some of their enforcement projects, specifically the drug As you know, one of my favorite subjects to report on to the council is the K-9 program. Our second K-9 team, Officer Matt Moore and his partner Blitz, just completed the narcotic detection course last month in May. And this was really the milestone that we were going after since, you know, all the talk and the decision-making started occurring regarding, you know, redundancy issue for our K-9 teams and programs and getting to where we wanted to be as a department. So it is official. Both of our dog teams, our K-9 teams are now dual certified in the patrol apprehension component and the narcotics detection component. During the first two quarters, our K-9 teams have conducted multiple community demonstrations. In addition, our canines have been deployed for narcotic detection missions, both locally and by our allied agencies, criminal tracking missions. We've also assisted with area searches and we're responsible for one surrender apprehension. Our detectives continue to investigate the more sophisticated types of major crimes and provide necessary follow-up investigation, really on those matters that exceed the complexity level or the time restriction, the time restrictions that are present within the patrol division. So featured on this slide is some of the higher-profile crimes that were investigated within the current reporting period. Top right suspect is shown, this was the recent robbery of the Coast Central Credit Union. This occurred on May 18th. And just a little update, this particular investigation is ongoing. Detectives are working collaboratively with our federal partners at the FBI who have assisted us. We're very grateful for their assistance and the investigation is going seamlessly. Bottom of the screen, a local area teacher who was arrested after an investigation on April 6th. The suspect is currently facing four counts, four felony counts of sexual Back to the Measure Z topic, we were successful yet again. The department was able to obtain full funding for both our school resource and drug task force officer positions. This was a unique year. I had, or we had as the department, quite a bit of support from not only our community, but also school officials and our own council members. Support came in the form of letter writing. It came in the form of, you know, attending some of the committee Z meetings and the board of supervisors meetings. And that collaborative effort is really impactful, you know, when you are trying to justify positions that really are a huge resource to the community here. It's something that, you know, in my opinion, I feel strongly that the, the city, the community, the Eeyore River Valley as a whole have really come to depend on as part of the professional policing services that we provide. On a side note, I thought this might be an appropriate time to announce the departure of Lindsay Frank from the school resource officer program. She'll be rotating out of the SRO position after five years of service to our school. She's left some enormous shoes to fill. Dylan Burley, who has also been coaching football over the high school over the last few seasons, has really ripened his relationship with school officials and, you know, some of our local youth. We feel like Dylan's going to do an outstanding job, hit the ground running and really hit the ball out of the ballpark. Dylan's excited about, you know, taking on the new responsibilities and, you know, kind of working in this other capacity that is extremely important to the department and to the schools. And I feel like, you know, with a high degree of confidence that, again, Dylan is really going to hit the ground running and he's going to represent the department and the city well. I just wanted to give the council a quick update concerning the USDA Rural Assistance Grant from 2021 and the USDA's Community Facilities Grant from earlier this year. As council is probably very much aware, in both cases, the city's grant proposal for new police vehicles were accepted and approved. We are current, we are currently awaiting delivery on a total of six brand-new patrol vehicles. But, you know, and of course, our desire is to obtain the vehicle sooner than later and give a much-needed facelift to our fleet. Currently, though, just in the nature of transparency, I wanted to relate to the council, we are experiencing some delays with Ford Motor Company. Some of those delays are specific to like electronic chip shortages. And there are some other issues with their logistical ordering that is specific to Ford. And I can answer more questions offline on that if there are any, any, any specific questions. I'll just briefly touch on some regional highlights. The city of Fortuna hosted the FBI's Active Shooter Train the Trainer Course in April, and also hosted the FBI's Criminal Behavior Analysis Course in June. Both of these trainings were extremely successful and inclusive across a broad, broad spectrum of stakeholders within the community. For the Criminal Behavior Analysis Course, we had members from different segments of the community, houses, leaders from houses of worship, the education community, we had council members in attendance, law enforcement officers. And I think it was really a good collaboration between federal resources and our regional resources to relay some important information that can be taken back. My challenge to those attending the course was that, you know, you take one or two things away from that training and bring it back to your organization or your community and really look hard at implementing those things. You know, because our goal here ultimately is to, you know, make Fortuna and the Eeyore River Valley a great place, a safe place to, to work and live. One side note, I will say that due to the enormous success of these two trainings, it's definitely something that we're going to replicate in future years. Other regional issues, just kind of hitting on the fact that we still have sworn members participating with the Humboldt County Sheriff's Regional SWAT Team, as well as the Humboldt County Drug Task Force as previously highlighted. I am currently serving as the Vice President to LECA, which is our Law Enforcement Chief Executive Association here in Humboldt County. And I'm also participating as a member of the Executive Board of Directors for the Drug Task Force. New this year, I'm serving as the regional, Region One Representative to the Board of Directors at the California Police Chiefs Association. Start to wrap some things up. Finally, I'm pleased to report that the Fortuna Police Department is continuing to do well in the areas of recruitment, staffing, and retention. We're finally to that point where we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. We're down to our final vacant police officer position. And fortunately, we have what we feel is a very good candidate who is completing the background investigation phase at this point. We're still down one public safety dispatcher position. We're actively interviewing for that applicants that are interested in that spot. And the new records position was like wildfire. As soon as we flew that and posted it, we immediately started getting tons of applications. So it's definitely a position that we have a lot of interest in. That position posting will close the first of July and we'll look to start a round of screening and the first round of interviews by Friday, July 8th. Finally, I'm pleased to report to the council that PD continues to have an extremely healthy and positive department morale. We remain committed to work in a collaborative culture which focuses on professional policing. And with that, I would really like to thank the council for your time this evening. This does conclude my presentation and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Chief. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. It's gratifying to see the drop in assaults and larceny and some of the things that not only look bad, but that also affect quality of life and perception of your quality of life. So.
Yeah, it's a good point and one I was hoping to get a question on. So thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I, I just want to caution the council, there was a, a belief among, among chief executives throughout California that once this switch to NIBRs went on and some of our RMS systems, which is our records management system, started to kind of implicate those more sophisticated checking features and things that go into our cyber's NIBRs reporting, that crime trends would actually show an increase. I was fully expecting that to happen and have some questions like what is going on in the city of Fortuna, knowing for well that we had been warned time and time again by the experts that that was a possibility. I'm not sure what to attribute those decreases in crime statistics to at this point. I mean, certainly there are a lot of ideas. This could be the result of, you know, transferring from pandemic times to more of an endemic look. It also could be just in the way that our RMS systems are checking for errors and more accurately collecting this data. So again, I chose not to present the council midpoint with a full NIBRs report. I thought it was much more effective to look at something that we're a little more used to. But at the end of the year, when we have a full year of data, it's going to be interesting to see if those downward trends continue or not.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
I just had a quick question. In looking at your, at the NIBRs report, under the category of rape cases, offenses reported and offenses cleared, there's three reported and zero cleared. With regard to confidentiality, would you be able to expound a little bit about those cases and maybe the difficulties there?
Yeah, I mean, there's so many classes. It's a great question. Thank you, Councilmember Lucy. There's so many categories that go into, you know, rape is more of a layman term, but we have, you know, everything from, you know, we have different classes from forcible rape to kind of more along the line of the date rape stuff and then the underage stuff. So this is not a case or a reflection in that report that, you know, we have some sort of, you know, serial problem or person running around the city. Oftentimes, these cases can be challenging when we are trying to work with victims. Obviously, it's a very difficult subject to talk about when you've been victimized. Sometimes people will start a report and then decide that they don't want to go through with it. You know, we do our best as community servants to encourage people to take our assistance and get that help. There's a lot of resources that are available for victims of sexual assault. But, you know, there are some complexities with it. Sometimes, as I mentioned earlier, and I don't mean this to come across in any way insensitive, but, you know, sometimes it is a case where the district attorney where, you know, there are some discrepancies in, you know, more of a two-party, he said, she said, or, you know, fill in the descriptor there about what had happened. And sometimes there are, there are, there's a lack of information. There are all kinds of things. I could probably list 20, 30, 30 reasons why a case may not be cleared. But it has nothing to do with the fact of any procedural issue with the department. We're pretty standard on how we handle any case involving sexual assault from the beginning to the end.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to oral comments from the public. Does anyone wish to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close oral comments and move on to the consent calendar. We have 11 items tonight, including city council minutes and our monthly reports from our administrative department, community development, finance, parks and rec, police department, public works, river lodge, and our report of disbursements. Also want to approve a supplement, supplemental budget request for grip pump repairs and our solid waste collection franchise rate adjustment request. Does anyone wish to pull any items?
Kay, please.
Anyone else? All right, Mike.
I see Linda is here. I just have a general question. In reading this report, it looks like the CPI index was 9%, but also an indication that the actual increase is less than that. Could you talk about that a little bit as to why or in how?
Thank you. Yeah. Every year, according to our contract, we look at CPI, which is identified in the contract, which CPI index we look at and which month. CPI is only applied to the collection portion of the rates. This year CPI is 9%. You can see over the years since 2000, I think eight or nine that's in your packet. CPI has ranged from 0.01% negative to, to now this 9%, but it's usually around two and a, two and a half percent. What's offsetting that is the recycling processing fee went down. And, and there was also a lot less tonnage collected in recycling. So the recycling So the recycling processing fee went down because the commodities market came back up, and so we were able to get more money for that. And also because the buybacks were closed, there was CRV material in the blue can. So what Recology did is they pursued getting those funds from the state to offset the rates. So that's the reason why you're seeing an adjustment that's a lot less than what we would have seen if we had just applied CPI. So, and that part of the rate that has to do with the non-collection part is it's what's offsetting your CPI index increases.
Okay, so if that's the case, why isn't the increase matching the net?
It's an average increase is what we're, the net increase, I think you're looking at a 2.3% or 2.1%, I think it's 2.6% or whatever it is. It's an average increase across the board. So if you look at the portion of the rates that deal with the collection part only and you're comparing last year to this year, you'll see a 9% difference in the collection portion of the rates. But because disposal, which is the pass-through fees, are based on the size of the can and the estimated volume in there, the rates are different from depending on what the service sizes are, so you'll see a different size rate increase on those, if that makes sense. So the rate impact is different on like a 40-yard bin versus a 20-gallon can, so because 40% of that rate is based on the volume of, which is the disposal cost.
But basically, everybody will be paying the 9% increase.
Everybody's paying the 9% increase, but the offset is applied differently depending on the amount of material that's collected.
And we do have a presentation. If the rest of the council does have questions on this, Linda and I worked on putting together a presentation that kind of describes an overview of how the rates and we could show what those increases are. If that doesn't answer all of the questions, we'd be happy to run through that.
I read my packet. It looked pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody else want to see a presentation?
It won't hurt my feelings if you say no.
If I have additional, get in touch with you.
Yes, yes, but I really think it's a fair way of doing it, is showing the credit with the CRV buybacks being closed to the rate pairs.
From looking at things, it looks like a 32-gallon can, it's going up $1.36 a month.
Right.
So, that's, that was the, because that's what I have.
That's the basic.
That's what I paid attention to. I know that dumpsters are going to go way up, and a 20-gallon can's going to go up less.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Linda?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Did you open it up for public?
That's all I can say.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the 11 items on the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to city council business, we have the second reading of ordinance 2022-756 to amend certain regulations relating to the Fortuna Business Improvement District.
Our city attorney will be handling both this item to amend the municipal code and then also the assessment for F-Bid.
Good evening. It's good to be with you tonight. So tonight, staff recommends that the council conduct the second reading of ordinance number 2022-756, which amends the regulations for F-Bid. And as you'll recall from the last meeting, when the first reading was conducted, this ordinance accomplishes a few things. One is to remove any recital in the ordinance that the F-Bid Advisory Committee will also serve as the Board of Directors of the nonprofit Fortuna Business Improvement Corporation, which is in the process of being dissolved, and the contract with the city has now been terminated. It also provides the council more authority and flexibility in making appointments to the advisory board, and also provides some flexibility as to the compositional makeup of the board, retaining the same representation categories, both in terms of industries and areas reflected on the committee, but does provide for some flexible language in the event that there's an insufficient applicant pool to fill those requirements. The other thing, it adds a term limit of two years with the ability to be reappointed, and it includes some additional responsibilities that the F-Bid Advisory Committee is required to do under the enabling legislation. And I think that, for the most part, summarizes the ordinance. I'm happy to go into any additional detail as to any particular provisions if the council desires.
This is our second reading, so I don't know if we have additional questions from the first time we saw this, or if we're good.
I'm good.
All right, would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading by title only and adopt ordinance 2022-756.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Sienna?
Ordinance 2022-756, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending chapter 5.40, Fortuna Business Improvement District of the Fortuna Municipal Code and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lousie?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. All right, I'll skip to the next one. Two new pages. Here we go. Our next item is a public hearing for the Fortuna Business Improvement District Annual Assessment.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing for the council to consider authorizing the annual assessment for the next fiscal year. At the last meeting, the council adopted a resolution of its intention to authorize these rates for the next fiscal year and directed this city clerk to publish the resolution in the newspaper in the manner required by law, which has been done, giving those responsible to pay the assessment the opportunity to submit written protests against the assessment or to provide oral protest or comment on the assessment at tonight's meeting. The resolution of intent was based upon the annual F-Bid report that was provided at the last council meeting, which recommended, and the council accepted, that the rates remain unchanged from the prior fiscal year, that the boundaries of the district remain unchanged, and that the three core areas that are in the existing ordinance also remain as is. And so the council accepted that report without modification, which brings us to tonight's public hearing, at which point the council is supposed to consider whether written protests against the assessment meet the 51% threshold. If so, the council does not have the authority to levy the assessment for the next fiscal year. If not, then the council can levy the assessment for the next fiscal year by adopting the resolution, which is 2022-23. And so it's my understanding that no written protests have been received by the city in advance of tonight's meeting. Written protests could be presented at this time, but once the council closes the public hearing, that would be the deadline for written protests to be submitted, and we can make a determination as to whether the 51% threshold has been met or not. And again, if it hasn't, then staff recommends that the council adopt resolution 2022-23 to authorize the annual assessment for the next fiscal year.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, we will open a public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this item or to protest the assessment? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. And now we are to determine whether a protest exists, and I guess that would be no?
That's correct.
All right, so we need a motion to adopt resolution 2022-23.
I'll sub.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Sienna?
Resolution 2022-23, a resolution of the city council of the City of Fortuna, authorizing the levy of an annual assessment for 2022-23 fiscal year for the Fortuna Business Improvement District. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lousie?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you, Sienna. All right, moving on to city manager's report. Merritt.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I just have a few items, and I was going to put up our meeting schedule on to the screen just to run through the next council meetings. Our next, tonight's the June 21st council meeting. We have a light agenda and very few items for July 5th, so staff is recommending that we cancel that meeting unless the council has any objective and we'd like to cancel the July 5th meeting, and that would make our next meeting on July 18th. Next planning commission meeting is on June 28th. Our next, the planning commission has also been having special meetings to discuss zoning, and the next special meeting for the planning commission will be on July 19th. The next Measure E committee meeting is on September 20th, and our next Rona County Recreation Park District meeting is on July 6th. And again, those agendas can be found on the city's website under Your Government.
Okay, so if we don't have a meeting on July 5th, don't kill us on the 19th, because that's right after rodeo weekend, and we got things to do.
No promises. We'll do our best. There's not a lot on the July 5th agenda, and it just seemed like it would be a good time to cancel that. We have a lot of staff on vacations, and, you know, without a number of items on there. If we had a lot of items, we're sensitive to that, and we'll make sure not to load it up just to skip a meeting, so.
Okay.
Cancel a meeting?
Just a few items I wanted to run through. We did have one planning commissioner who resigned due to health issues, so we have two planning commission seats that are vacant. One is for a regular planning commission member, and a second is for an alternate. So if anybody's interested, they could contact the city clerk's office and get the details. It's a great opportunity to get involved in the city and the planning process and apply discretion and judgment to different projects that are coming through the city. We are also continuing to work on the franchise agreement. We have outside counsel that's helped us to draft an agreement. We're working also with Recology, who's provided us language for a franchise agreement, so we're working right now to reconcile the two. We're hoping to bring a franchise agreement back in front of the council in August for consideration. And at this point, the goal is really to be able to have something in place prior to the end of the year, and when those new services that are required under SB 1383 start up, including the mandatory collection and the collection of organic waste. I just wanted to remind the public that we're very quickly, we're supposed to have some warm weather this week, we're coming into fire danger. There's a number of properties that have high weeds. Our code compliance officer issued over 30 nuisance abatement letters to folks who have high weeds that could pose a fire risk, and so we're following up on those, but this is just a reminder to the public to make sure if you have high weeds, please cut those, and we much prefer to see voluntary compliance than to have to issue abatement notices. Then staff's continuing to work on the proposed development at the mill site in parallel with a specific plan, so that's ongoing and probably will continue to be for some time. We hope to be able to bring that back to the council in the near future. We're very close to being done with the plans on the police facility. The city's provided comments on a draft final set of plans, so we're waiting for the consultant to complete those, and we're very anxious to see them move forward, and so we're talking with the consultant, doing everything we can to keep that moving forward. And then I see our Parks Director Cameron Moles here. This is more of an interesting story that I thought the council might appreciate, but there's a large Monterey pine tree that was up in Rona Park, and it started to lean and crack, and park staff cordoned off the area, and it was obviously going to fall. People weren't paying attention to the boundary, so late last, week before last, the decision was made to remove the tree as it was a hazard and noticeably leaning, but it turns out it was one of the largest, the largest Monterey pine tree in North America. So it's non-native, it was planted by others, probably around just after the turn of the century, and you can see the picture on the left is when it was standing, and picture with our Parks Director Cameron Moles on the right is, you know, after it came down, you could see the ground heaving, and there was cracks in the trunk, but it was a 221-foot circumference, 160-foot tall, 87-foot crown spread, and there was a post in a website dedicated to it by Michael Kaufman. And so it was unfortunate, but I think it was really interesting, and it wasn't the biggest one in the world, just the tallest one in North America. The biggest ones are in New Zealand, so Cameron had to make a call, and it, you know, it was going to go one way or another, so it was better to do it in a controlled setting, and, you know, we take the protections of the trees in the park very seriously, but this, there really was an option. It was coming down, it had already started to fall and was leaning on other trees, so we'll be looking at a creative reuse for some of the redwood logs that came down, but this tree trunk will remain in the park, and maybe we'll put an interpretive sign there. So that concludes my report.
All right, thanks, Merritt.
A quick question.
Sure.
Can you put the last screen, not the, not the tree, the one before?
The one before, sure.
Yeah. Franchise agreement, are we going to see a draft version of that before we get a recommended adoption?
Yes, yeah, so we could have, we could bring that forward in a workshop fashion. There's a lot of things to decide, and the point we're at right now is, you know, we have two versions, one that, you know, was given to us from our attorney, was an example that came from another municipality that they put a lot of work into, and then we have another two of them. So at this point, it's on my plate to kind of, you know, compare and contrast the two and decide on the format, and then, you know, send that back to Recology with the feedback that we have and which format we'd like to use. So it's on my desk, and I'd be happy to bring that back if the council wants to see it at a workshop format. Once I, you know, have a little bit more done, I'd be happy to bring it to council in a workshop.
I would like that personally, but at the same time, I don't know how much is mandated, you know, mandated, and how much is our discretion.
Yeah, you know, I think it'd be, I'd be happy to put it on a workshop, and we could have that in advance of the council meeting, and that way you could see what staff is looking at, if you wanted to get your eyes on it before we get too far down the road of one way or another.
I think also, we just need to open it up to the public in a workshop style, so if people do have concerns about what they're going to be forced to have to pay for down the road, it would be good to have them available and have the opportunity.
Yeah, and some of the bigger things are how we charge for solid waste rates, and then the other question is, how many services do we put on to the franchisee to comply with regulations versus city staff taking on? So those are going to be some of the key decision points of just reviewing how the, you know, how the rates are established and how the rates are reviewed, and then exactly what services does the city want. So there'll be some items that certainly the council will want to weigh in on.
He who holds the data holds the keys.
And then the mill site specific plan, rather than explain it five times to five different people, do you want to do that?
I'd be, yeah, so we haven't had a planning workshop in a while, so I'd be happy to bring it back there, but just very basically, the city has two grants, one from the Headwaters Fund and one from the state, a LEAP grant under the state to both to do a specific plan, and they do different parts of that specific plan. So staff is moving forward with the development of the specific plan with our consultant Plan West, and at the same time, after the city started the specific plan, we had a proposal for a package distribution facility, and so they're working on their environmental document, making some decisions regarding that project. So they'll be deciding whether or not they want to move forward very soon, and we have, you know, there's, it's been a hot topic that's had a lot of attention to staff, and there's been changes regularly, so that will come to a head very soon, one way or another.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that before, it's a recommended decision time, so that we have more understanding of what.
The specific plan can, there will be a series of public meetings, but the development proposal will probably be adoption of the environmental document and potentially a decision on a conditional use permit. So you'll probably see that with a discretionary permit decision, so there's not really a way to bring that forward in advance.
Okay. Will that be before any grading permit exploratory type? Thank you.
All right. Future agenda items that we don't have on our list already? Seeing none, council reports. Mike Johnson?
Well, even though I wasn't in meetings here, I was in meetings by Zoom, believe me. One of the things, part of my position on H-COG allows me to be part of what they call the North State Deal District Engineers and Locals, and that's with Caltrans, and you can learn a lot of different things on there, such as what's happening with Broadway, what's happening with Last Chance Grade. They're still on track to have the Last Chance Grade portion with no traffic control by the fall, so you'll be able to get through there. But if you've been up north lately, you know that once you get up over the crest and start down the other side, the Cushing Creek area, there's construction and controlled traffic there. So hopefully, that'll be done at the same time. So hopefully that'll be done at the same time. Another thing is on Broadway, there are going to be what they call pop-ups, where they, part of the concept of what's going to happen to Broadway involves different pedestrian things and traffic routing. One of them, as we're familiar with, is the bald sidewalks, that shortens the distance people have to get across the street in and narrows the road a little. But another is a median refuge, and that two-lane all the way down the middle of Broadway presents problems for that, so they're going to try something out to see how it works and how the businesses react, because that's the big issue, is how businesses have access to, customers have access to businesses. And adding some Class 4 bike lanes, and if you want to know more about that, you can go to broadwaypopups.com, and they'll tell you when and where they're doing it. A couple of things that happened that unfortunately this meeting was on the 8th, and the mattress collection was on the 11th, but Caltrans, as part of keeping the roadsides clean, had a mattress collection event at the high school parking lot. Some people may have seen that, but we had no advance notice. I only had three days' notice, and I called some people and told them, but I'm going to try and keep my eyes peeled out earlier for stuff like that, because they want to keep the roads clean, too. And if I remember hearing right, I think Merritt has entered into, or the city has entered into, Merritt initiated an agreement with Clean California.
Two things, one, our general services staff assisted Caltrans with the mattress pickup and was going to staff it, then last minute, I think Caltrans changed their mind and decided to staff that, but a lot of the coordination legwork, including assistance with the development of the flyers, was done by general services. So we did have some, I think we did, might have announced that at a council meeting? Yeah, so we had a little bit of notice and had something to do with that, but ultimately Caltrans came through, and then they were waiting for some delay, there's some delays. We're also working on negotiating a Clean California grant to assist with some of the roadside cleanup, but they needed more time because they're struggling to figure out how that overlapped with the Adopt a Highway, and they didn't want to have double, they didn't want the potential to double count. The city doesn't do Adopt a Highway, but we're hoping to be able to fund a portion of our contract with River Lodge for some of the off-highway invisible areas, not on the highway, but they're taking their time to work through that, and they're supposed to get back to us in July to negotiate a grant MOU.
Good. The other thing is, on the median out there, they're going to get rid of that grass strip and replace it with pavement, so it doesn't have to be mowed, weed-eated, and hold litter as well. So that's just a few things. One of the big things is on the Eureka Arcata Corridor Safety Project, the bids for that, it's going to be advertised starting July 8th, and believe it or not, a lot of the bids that they've had in District 1 have come in within the engineer's estimate, which you think, wait, how is that happening? But it did. So they're hopeful they don't have to make any special requests for us, and that's all I'm doing right now. I don't want to take up the whole meeting.
I have a quick question, Mike. Have you folks in H-COG had any discussion with regard to the safety corridor and that large, huge apartment complex that will be at least in discussion right now off of Indianola?
Haven't heard anything about that, but that area is going to be under construction for about two and a half years because of the overpass, it's going to, the safety for Indianola.
Right.
And that's what I was talking about, that's part of what I was talking about with the engineer estimates. But we have not heard anything about that at the H-COG. I had never heard anything about it till right now.
Yeah.
I know they're looking everywhere for housing, so.
It's, well, and it's a part of Cal Poly Humboldt, supposed to be in excess of like 800 apartments out there. It's going to be huge as far as congestion.
That's definitely going to be, but no, so I haven't heard anything about that yet.
All right, Mike Losi.
Thank you. I only have one item, and that is, and this is something I've been talking about for the last year, which is the Redwood Coast Airport microgrid. If you ever get a chance to go out to McKinleyville, take a look at the solar panel array that is out there, it's huge, and there is a completion and successful commercial operation of that microgrid. It's been in operation now for about a month, month and a half. It's tomorrow. Gates open at 10:00 a.m., the public is invited, everybody can go. There will be coffee and refreshments, 10:30 to 11:30, there will be politicians of all nature speaking, and noon, there's a microgrid tour. It is limited, so there needed to be reservations made before now, but if you're still interested, you might go and you might still be able to get into the tail end of one of the tours. But like you say, it's open to all the public, and it's going to be a great event, and it just publicly lets people know that this microgrid is up and running. It's an amazing feat. It feeds energy back into the grid on sunny days, but it also provides emergency power to both the Coast Guard and the Humboldt County Airport. When power goes down there, microgrid kicks up and through their battery system, and so the Coast Guard and the airport should always have power. That's all I have to report.
Are they going to have a micro glass with a micro brew for the microgrid?
One could only hope.
All right, thanks, Mike. Jeremy?
Well, we did the business of the Fortuna Business Improvement District already this evening, but would like to just say thank you to the last standing board members for the work that they did while they were part of the corporation, and for the president for staying on to finalize the completion of dissolving the corporation. It's appreciated, it's volunteer work that doesn't get a lot of praise, so I definitely want to say thank you to those people that have contributed the time and energy to that organization, including Kalen and her extra efforts as the last standing staff member. And then regarding Parks and Rec, they didn't have a meeting last week, didn't have enough on the agenda for pulling a meeting together, but there was a staff report that was put in our packet today. I was hit a few highlights. I'm always impressed with the amount of work that they do. Swapped out 400 cubic yards of playground materials from the cut-up tires to the engineered wood fibers in Rona Park, and I drove through the park the other day, and it was so neat to see how many families use that thing on a regular basis. It's so impressive. I mean, we must have a lot of nighttime workers, because there's a lot of families in the middle of the day out there, so that was pretty cool. Mike, you might be able to tell me if it's still in there, but I was fascinated to hear about the daughter, the Native daughters of the Golden West put a tour together for their district president, because there's a 125th anniversary display in the Depot Museum right now, so if anybody has thought they've seen everything in the museum, you're wrong, because she always changes out that front room all the time, so. Also impressed to see that 1,543 skaters skated in our skating rink on the month of May, so I'm really appreciative of that recreational opportunity there. And then was also impressed to see that there was five applications from kids, teenagers that are 13 years or older volunteering to assist the camp leaders for our kid camp that's going on. I think that's really cool to see leaders in training programs step up and have people that want to be involved for building their leadership skills. Lastly, I wanted to say a quick thank you to one of our always very generous businesses, along with the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, Sport and Cycle here in Fortuna, helped to sponsor a bike rodeo on May 14th, and actually supplied a bicycle mechanic during the entire event to tune up bikes and to fix bikes and things like that. It's just one more opportunity to say thank you to generous business community for all that they do to support our youth, so. That is all I have on that.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
I attended the Cal City's Public Safety Policy Committee, and we reviewed two ballot measures that were supposed to be coming up on this next ballot, I believe. In summary, these measures would allow federally recognized Native American tribes to operate roulette, dice games, and sports wagering on tribal land beginning in 2022. The measure would also allow onsite sports wagering at privately operated horse racing tracks in Alameda, Los Angeles, San Diego, in Los Angeles, Orange County, and San Diego Counties in California. After hearing both sides of the people talking for and against, the policy committee went with not supporting this measure. The second measure would allow sports wagering online. I don't know how they can regulate who's 21, there was a lot of questions on this one, too, and so the committee actually, this one went really quick, the committee denied supporting that one, so they didn't support that one either. There was some talk about, there's quite a few grants out there for, from the cannabis tax on there to, for public safety, for all of that, but Fortuna doesn't qualify for that because you do have to have not a total ban on cannabis to get any of those grants, and there was quite a bit of money out there. The last thing I wanted to report on was the FBI Behavioral Threat Assessment class. I attended that. Chief pretty much did my report for me, so thank you, chief, I appreciate that, and I wanted to thank the Fortuna Police Department and ENIC for putting on this training. It was great training, there was a lot of people from the schools there to, it basically helps them recognize people who might be at risk for these danger, you know, that might be going to be committing these crimes, or what to look for in those. There was a lot of churches there, a lot of teachers there, and it was a well-attended class with well over 100 people in there, and so anyway, thank you again for that. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thanks, Tammy. REDAC was canceled for the month of May due to lack of a quorum because it was too close to Memorial Day, so our June meeting's coming up on the 27th. I attended the, it's a long name, I always forget, the League of California Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Committee meeting on the 10th for three hours. Again, kind of a split group, we don't seem to get anything done, we just continue to bang our heads against the wall, and it's very frustrating right now, because everyone, not everyone, about half the group thinks that the government's here to help, and whatever the state of California mandates or says, it's in all of our best interests, which I am totally in disagreement with, and so I struggle with that committee right now, but I keep showing up. All right, we also have a closed session tonight. We have two items. Conference with Labor Negotiators Agency Designated Representatives, our Merritt Perry, City Manager, Unrepresented Employees, Police Chief Day. Conference with Labor Negotiators Agency Designated Representatives, Ryan Plot, City Attorney, for the Unrepresented Employee, City Manager. So if anyone has any comments on those two items, you can come up and to the podium. Seeing none, we need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Motion to adjourn to closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you guys for coming.